...Board of Education, your order. Thank you all for coming.
Valerie Anderson is still here. Tony Bedini. Alan Brown.
Here.
Gregory Cava.
Here.
Michelle Goroff.
Here.
Emily Hibbert.
Here.
James Hirschfield.
I'm here.
Kelly Locke.
Here.
Jennifer Pody.
Yeah.
Michael Sinatra.
Here.
I am here. And Peter Tagley.
Here.
So we're all here except Tommy. Before we get on, is there a motion to amend the agenda?
There is. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to amend the agenda to move the facilities report to right now at the beginning because I need to attend another meeting tonight.
Is that 7.3? Who are you talking about?
Actually, I was thinking both 5.4 and 7.3.
All right. There's a motion to amend the agenda to move this Greg needs to leave his second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying? All right, we'll put 7.3. Is there any other motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add a 7.6 at the end of 7 to discuss two issues, one which we were alerted to this afternoon about the Cool School program, profiling Burnham School in the district, and also about an after-school child care program being part of the district in Burnham.
Okay, it's moved to the second. Is there any discussion? To add that as item 7.6? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. That one?
Abstained.
Sorry. Okay. So let's go to the facilities committee report.
All right, this will be extremely short. I wanted to let you know that we have a new facilities hire who has a need to electrical license. He's been hired as a maintenance grounds employee. So we fulfilled that missing need in the department. I won't talk about the budget because that's already been discussed tonight. Instead, I would like to move on to the item 7.3, which is also part of my report, which is on the initiative composting pilot program at Burnham. Let me just tell you about this fairly briefly. The Burnham is a town that's in the -- our state is divided into areas, regions for waste disposal. The Housatonic Resource Recovery Authority operates primarily in these towns around Danbury. And Burnham is the only town in our three regions that's part of the Housatonic District. I just said Burnham, I said Bridgewater is what I meant to say. The town of Bridgewater is part of the Housatonic Recovery District, and Burnham is the only school in the district that's situated within the Housatonic District. The Housatonic Authority is trying to handle the enormous volume of waste, and part of that volume of waste is what's called municipal solid waste, which is garbage, basically, for want of a better word. About 32 percent of that is organic waste that could be composted. And HRRA is creating a pilot program, and they're going to start with the town of Bridgewater as the pilot town to see if it works. Where actually what will happen is residents and other facilities within the town will be encouraged to separate their waste stream and take out the organics, which are mostly the kind of food scraps you have at Dover. But also, unlike home composting, the operation they're going to use will also be able to compost fish, meat, and other those products, which is something you would never do in your home compost pile unless you wanted to attract a lot of your friends and not pleasant ones. But they have a closed -- where they're going to be taking this, they're going to be taking this, collecting this material and taking it to a farm that has a closed system for composting. So it's perfectly safe for them to do that, and they're able to do that. And this removes an enormous piece of the waste stream and theoretically saves money on waste disposal and also is much more friendly to the earth. What they would like to do is have Burnham School participate, both from an educational perspective, educating children on how to be a good steward of the earth and citizen, but also because Burnham School has a piece of the waste stream in Bridgewater. So this has been proposed. The facilities committee has looked into it and embedded it. We've met with Jen Iainuchi, who is the person who's spearheading this for HRRA. And this is -- a lot of the potential concerns have been satisfied, the satisfaction of the facilities committee. We're not going to be composting on-site. We're simply going to be putting a second container next to the dumpster that's on-site. It'll be a small container, in Burnham's case, like a trash can. The organic waste will be separated inside the facility into biodegradable bags and then placed into the separate containers. So when they take the garbage out, they'll put the regular waste into the garbage dumpster and the organics into the separate facility. It will then be picked up, taken away, and it'll be handled in that manner. So we will not have to get into the actual composting. And then, after it's been composted, the farmers doing it will return some proportion of that compost to the Burnham facility for use in their garden. So this is actually a very clean, easy way to handle this waste. The only thing it requires from us, really, is the labor to separate the waste streams and to carry the bags to the containers, which we're doing now. So it shouldn't be a big deal. So we've looked at it from the standpoint of what's going on on-site, what kind of resources do we have to commit to it, which are primarily labor. And so we were of the mind to recommend that we participate in this. Now, the way it's worked financially is that HRRA is subsidizing for a period of six months, and there'll be no charge for this disposal. At the end of the six-month period, basically in the summer, they're going -- we're going to have two months to negotiate an amendment to our contract with our waste hauler to figure out how much this is going to cost. At that point, Don's going to have to figure out whether or not it's actually going to be more expensive or less expensive or whatever than our current plan. But the expectation is this is not going to be a very cost-intensive item. And it might be $100 a month or something. I mean, it's not going to be a huge number out of our $4,000 waste department. So this isn't likely to be a large number, but at the end of that period, if we're not satisfied, we can just simply walk away with no obligation and no cost having to invest in it. So it seems like a no-brainer. One, it's free. Two, it's educational. Three, it's the right thing to do from the standpoint of the earth. And four, it doesn't create any logistical or other problems for us. So the facilities committee, on a vote of 2-0-0, voted to recommend to the board that, and I would make a motion, that the Board of Education participate in the HRRA Bridgewater Organic Waste Pilot Program for the remainder of the 2013-14 school year.
All right, move to the second. Any discussion? Mike?
Just a quick question. I think it's a great idea in general, but I know that we do have, you know, large animals like bear even in this area. Are the containers secure enough to withstand a curious bear from?
I can tell you from personal knowledge that there is no container, including the metal dumpsters, that are isolated from the curious bear because I happen to be on the board of an association for vod that has a curious bear that visits the property. It literally removes the top of the dumpster and accesses it as well. And there is almost nothing you can do. So no, these containers are plastic -- this is a plastic garbage container with a sealed lid that if the bear wanted to use it for a missile, had no trouble.
What sort of bear? Like raccoons would stay out of it?
Yeah, it would be the kind of garbage can with the top that's ratcheted down so it's not, you know, just hanging out there. And frankly, it would be a dumpster, except the amount of organics generated by Burnham is not very large yet.
How often is the garbage picked up there? How often would this have -- how long will we have to hold this stuff?
Well, it wouldn't be any longer than it currently is held. Right now, you're mixing this into the regular waste stream, goes into the dumpster, and it's picked up. Don, do you know how frequently? Oh, did you leave? Don, how frequently are our wastes picked up at Burnham?
Once a week.
Once a week? So it would still be picked up weekly, just would be, instead of having it all in one container, it would be two separate.
So it would have a week to write it?
Have a week to write it as it does now.
Thank you.
Anything else, Peter?
I just, I don't know if I heard it correctly. The people in Bridgewater would be allowed to drive or to school around?
No. No. Everyone in Bridgewater will have the opportunity to participate in this program right from their homes. They could literally separate this waste in two containers at their homes and do it that way. The only difference is, is that Burnham would -- there really is no difference. Burnham would simply be a participant like any other Bridgewater person, any other Bridgewater family in participating in this program.
So that we are going to create compost -- we're not creating the compost, but we're going to have a special bin for compostable material this year.
That's right.
Taxpayers of Bridgewater are not going to use that.
No.
And then there's a charge for us being involved of thousands, whatever it is.
No, there is no charge at this point. We would have to negotiate. What it is, is that you have a contract with your waste hauler, and no one quite knows how this is going to impact it. Whether this will, theoretically, it should impact it positively by reducing the amount of waste that that hauler has to deposit at a landfill and thus reduce the tipping fees. That's the theory. We just don't know whether the economy of scale will be large enough with one school participating that it'll make sense for us to do it. And remember, the other towns are not in the district. Now, it's possible we could do this ourselves, but we don't have a plan for that right now. Right now, we're simply participating in the pilot, see how it works.
Just one more point of information from what I was reading in the news articles. One way that we might be able to recoup a little bit of money is that apparently anyone who participates in the program is able to pick up the compost after it's been treated. And so if we use that, whether it's for, for example, Burnham has an organic garden, whether it's for that garden, or even if we're, you know, for landscaping needs, we might be able to recoup a little bit of money. I know it's not a lot, but it would be something.
Yeah, no, that's definitely an incentive to do it, is to have it available, especially for the organic garden in Burnham. I think that would be a fine thing. And actually, for me, the biggest benefit is not so much the waste hauling aspect, although it's a good responsible thing to do, it's that the children in the school get an opportunity to learn about what we should be doing in terms of handling our waste. Either what we should be doing, or at least what we're paying to do, and what happens to us as a result of, you know, not using the recycling.
Michelle?
I was just going to say that I think it's a great idea to participate, and I hope that the pilot program is successful so that the other waste hauling companies will take a look at it and then it'll be available in all our schools. Because it's a great educational opportunity, I think, for our students.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, I just want to make a point. When you go to the Washington County Rescue Center, if you look at the amount of compostable material that's dumped into those dumpsters, it's absolutely incredible. I'll bet you a third or a fourth of the garbage that's dumped in our cans could be composted.
Well, Ms. Iainuchi has told us that it is about 32 percent of the typical household waste stream, waste stream is just organic material to be put on a compost pile. Although, the meat portion of it, again, I keep, do not put meat in your home compost pile. That is a nightmare. You don't want to do that. It will attract pests. But this is a different program, and this allows us to actually grab that piece into the composting stream, which otherwise wouldn't be available in your home.
Anyone else? Does a motion on the table then to approve this for the Burnham School to participate in this HRRA composting initiative? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying? All right, pass. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Ms. Iainuchi, for bringing this. Okay, we're back to our regular agenda. Next is the consent agenda. Anyone who wants to remove anything from the consent agenda?
I know that the minutes of the educational meeting changed to reflect what we're really doing. Don, we discussed.
Kelly, we'll just, we'll remove it from the consent agenda, and then we can discuss it. All right. So Kelly wants to remove 2.1. Anything else to be removed?
That's all there is?
No, there's 2.2. All right, then the balance of the consent agenda is approved. All right, then let's move to the approval of the minutes. Kelly?
The minutes listed, discussion on the AP scores and curriculum. The curriculum was not discussed, so I'd like to have the curriculum removed from the minutes.
Well, all right. Yes, Michelle?
Well, I would just say that I think the curriculum was discussed, maybe not as in-depth as you would like, but I remember Lori, I think it was Lori, speaking about the updates and remember talking about the child one and two and how the change in the curriculum, you know, whether it's A and B or AB and I forget. The change, all the different changes in the AP curriculum and how we're adapting to this. So that was curriculum.
Okay. Kelly, I'm sorry, if you're requesting something, you've got to have to be more specific as to exactly what you're requesting so we can vote on as to whether it's approved or not.
Yeah, the words and curriculum to be struck. It says, discuss.
I'm sorry, under which subsection?
Education.
Under education. Ms. Ferrer gave a review of curriculum changes and updates? I'm sorry.
She just wants to say AP update. She wants "and" curriculum taken out, right? That italics piece.
All right. Is that your motion?
Yes.
All right, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
All right. Is there any further -- Kelly has moved, and you've seconded a motion to remove the words "and curriculum update" from the February 24th minutes under our education period. It says now, "AP scores and curriculum update." Ms. Ferrer gave a review of curriculum changes and updates. I assume, I don't want to speak for Kelly, but I assume she feels that did not happen. Kelly?
Yeah, I felt that the discussion that touched on curriculum was very specifically related only to AP courses. And in fact, that discussion was extremely limited as well. When I asked what textbook is used in AP Biology classroom, neither the guidance counselor nor the principal or anyone in the room could tell me which textbook is used, which is a cornerstone curriculum. So we're going to have a discussion on curriculum. Let's really have a discussion on curriculum and have all of the facets available to us, whether it's AP or otherwise. And I think that the heading of that agenda item implies that the water curriculum was discussed. In September, I asked for a discussion on curriculum after we saw the 10th grade scores in reading. And we still haven't had that discussion. It's March, and I don't want to give the impression to the public that we've had that discussion on curriculum. Because we haven't. We're still waiting on that. The water, and they're ongoing discussion.
All right, well, I mean, just from myself reading this, when I see that "and curriculum update," I don't take that to mean that the entire region's whole curriculum was discussed. It was an item of the curriculums, as pointed out in the more specific. But, okay.
Would something broader, like AP offerings, be more specific to what was?
AP curriculum?
Well, again, the specifics of each class weren't reviewed, and that may be more to Kelly's point, but the individual classes that are offered have evolved, as Michelle had mentioned. I mean, that was, that was really in-depth. There's no like AP offerings versus the specific curriculum. Bear?
All right, well, there's a amendment on there's a motion to remove the words "and curriculum update" from this item of the minutes. Is there any?
Yeah, and then the motion?
Sure.
And to add the words "and AP offerings."
So you want to amend it to, so that item will read "AP scores and offerings?"
That's right.
All right, is there a second on that?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on that? The motion is to amend the heading of this minute item to say "AP scores and offerings." All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, so, thank you. Is there anything else, Kelly, on that? Okay. Thank you. Report the chair. I have no report other than to say I thank all the board members for appearing at the open hearing the other night, and thank the public for attending and having a lot of good questions and points, so I appreciate it. All right, Dr. Castillo, superintendents, report.
Yes, hi. I wanted to bring some correspondence to your attention. I see that it's going to be on 7.6, but I did put some information together for you that I'd just like to share before your discussion. Burnham School.
Just so we're clear, that 7.6, which was just added with regard to the Cool School and after-school child care.
I'm going to start with the after-school child care program. In the fall, late fall, some of the Burnham School, I thought they were PTO people. They may have been represented the town. I don't, no, it doesn't matter, really. But they brought a proposal to meet with Ed Connection about an after-school program. I didn't make the meeting. They sent me information. At that point, I thought it was just for Bridgewater. Last week, I got an email last Monday, which you see here, saying that they'd like to include the booth-free students also, and inquiring about a bus, the cost of a bus. And I was told that although that there's a program already in Roxbury, they had been informed and they were okay with this proposal. So today, I got another email asking.
From who?
From Carolyn Dwyer. And I can give her a copy so she has, but she has everything. That they want to launch this program, and this was at 8:49 in the morning. At 9:30 in the morning, I had the owner of, what's the name of the, the Roxbury Children's Center? Sorry. Come and talk to me about her concerns, and so there's a lot of concerns. There are a lot of balls in the air with this. You know, I do not have in my budget the costs for a bus to go from booth at the end of the day to Burnham. And I am, it's my opinion as superintendent of the region that we hold off on this until after the referendum because it's a lot of work. We have a lot going on. I don't know what the Roxbury PTO knows. I don't know what anybody knows. But I'm trying to follow procedures. So that's the first correspondence I wanted to send to you. And then the second piece was on Friday, on Thursday, I'm sorry. On Thursday, one of the, I guess, parents or residents from Rox, excuse me, from Bridgewater submitted to the Cool Schools program on Channel 3, WFSB. And I said, okay, sounds good. On Friday afternoon, I was not in Friday afternoon, but I got an email that they've been accepted and that there's already a meeting set for April 3rd and blah, 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 blah. And so I just, again, today I emailed Carolyn, because that's who's been sending me the emails, that I think it's a great thing. Again, we have a lot going on. SPAC testing and CMT testing starts next week, goes all the way to mid-April. We have a referendum, and that although I understand they would like to just feature Burnham, my preference would be for them to feature the region because I think we have to start thinking regionally. And if I don't force to that, I think I'm not doing my job. And if they don't want to just do the region, that's mine too. But I think, again, it should be after the referendum. So those are just things that, and I gave this to you before I knew it was going to be on the agenda because I want to be upfront and transparent about what's happening. So I guess we can discuss that later.
Can I just ask a quick question about Cool School?
Yes.
So this is a network, local network, and they're just going to come and film?
They, what they normally do, I've seen it before, is they highlight a school or a region or whatever in the morning during their newscast, which probably starts at 5:00 or 5:30 and goes to 7:00. And, you know, the kids are there yelling and the cheerleaders.
Oh, okay. They start the show that way?
Yeah. It's in between, you know, news segments. So they come.
Okay.
So that's that.
All right.
Okay. Personnel, you see there that Dan Huddy is resigning. He's moving to the West Coast. And Mr. Geeson is here to discuss the tuition information that you asked to be put on the agenda. So I'll turn it over to Tom.
Okay. In your packet is how we calculate a tuition in the region for non-resident children who want to attend here. Primarily, this has been followed for at least 10 years now, probably longer. And what it does is it takes a subschedule of the state report, called EDO-1. And on that schedule, it's broken into elementary school and secondary school. It excludes all of your special education costs. From that, what happens, and I've written this down for you, you then make a reduction for transportation costs from those numbers. And the reason you do that is because transportation is a responsibility of the parent. We don't provide transportation to non-resident students. After that calculation's completed, the board, when I was here the first time, in an attempt to try to attract students, set it at 90 percent of that rate. It's not the rate of net current expenditure. It's not the rate of gross expenditure. It's strictly the educational cost excluding your special ed and your transportation. So with that, for the 2013-14 year, the K-8 tuition was set at $17,896 for people outside the district. The high school rate was set at $15,303. Now, I did, what I did supply to you was two years. So you can see the calculation's been consistent over the two years, and you could go back and look at them all if you'd like. But that's primarily the way we set tuition for non-resident students who wish to come here. If a student arrives and they have special needs, we put a surcharge to it. And it's determined based upon what their needs are beyond regular education. So that, it varies. And again, it depends on how much additional services they might need. The other part of tuition is the one for Sherman. Sherman's embedded in a contract with Sherman, which expires at the end of next year. And that's set off of, it was agreed to use the cost on the strategic school profile at the high school at a 75 percent rate. So when the profile comes out, we multiply it out by 75 percent of that number, and that's what's set within the contract with the Sherman students. And then we bill them quarterly for that. And I think that's what you were asking me to provide you.
Is this, is this the, the Sherman number again is?
75 percent of the number on the strategic school profile. There's many reports. The reports, it was determined that it would make the most sense because they also have contracts with New Melford and Brookfield and New Fairfield. So it kind of aligned with what they were doing as well. And it's not based off the gross expenditure level.
And that number is 75 percent? The other number is the nine?
90 percent.
Is that 1530 for the high schools?
Right.
Is it 90 percent?
Of the, of the schedule, it's called an EDO-1 schedule.
But I mean, based on the Board of Ed decades back, that's?
Correct. That's what was given to work schedule for tuition in an attempt to bring students in. Way back in the day, it was a lot cheaper, but it was still pegged off the 90, and it's never changed.
And how did that do as far as the students?
You don't get very many students. It's, to be perfectly honest with you, and the superintendent probably answers this better, it's usually a case where a parent is desiring to move to the region, hasn't obtained housing, but is anticipating it, and then we start charging tuition off of it. And the second set of circumstances is a student in a nearby district who, for whatever reason, the parents feel as though that district isn't you, it's not satisfying the need, and they'll come in and ask for permission to join the SHPAG enrollment. And a determination is made to make sure that there's room and that the student will be okay in our environment as well. Those are primarily the only two. There's not a great influx of people that are being over there just to come here from an adjoining district other than there's some, there's always a circumstance involved.
Bob explained this to us in our finance committee meeting, and that 90 percent can be changed if it's the will of the board. We can go at any percentage if we, I mean, obviously, the consequences are that our taxpayers are going to be. are going to be paying more technically for education, but then again, we're adding more students, so we're improving our program. And so it's a 90%, we can go 75%, we can go 60, we can go 40. I mean, it's the will of the Board to make the change, this is just the formula that we've used in the past, that's all.
Mike?
I remember some time ago, I'm not sure if it was you, Bob, or some committee, we looked at what other towns charge as far as tuition.
I keep a semi-track of that when I need to and-
It was a fairly detailed list, there were at least 15 schools.
I did a survey and asked for some schools.
Okay.
And that was quite a while ago.
I guess my question with that is whether there's any consistency in how they determine it, if they're all going with 90% or if they're going, if the change is-
Mike, there's no, it's the will of the Board, okay? There's really no set guideline you could charge it. There's really nothing to prohibit you but your own, because I'm going to say, what you feel as though is correct for the environment, but you don't have to charge 90, you could charge 150 if you wanted to. It's really not set that way.
Peter?
Well, I've been through this before. Technically, you could plug a lot of holes in the school for a dollar a day. I mean, and we discussed that in the past many years ago. You have a classes that are half-filled, a third-filled or whatever, I mean, you can plug people in for a number that the Board is willing to politically massage, you can do that. Between 19 and 95, we did a survey, this is where I think we're missing students. It's obvious that the towns are not growing, especially in the northwest and northeast corners of the state. They're having big problems. And there's a variety of reasons why, which I won't go into. And it's been going, how long it will last, I have no idea. You listen to all the economic forecasts, there isn't any way to pin it. But we still are on a slide. We found out between 19 and 95 to 20, we did a mail-in to all the people in the school district. It was a committee of three people. And we found out that about 20% of the students in the region were not attending, who could go to the school, were not attending this school. It seems to me, if you really want to capture students, you're going to have to come up with a program that entices people to use our school system. You're going to have to do something with this building and the way programs are being run and what's being done to try and attract people who are not using it. Something that, I don't know why the private schools are able to attract 15 to 20% of our school population. There's something, that's an area we really have to work on. There is no reason for that. We have as good as facilities as any private school, good at staff, good at program, I don't know why that is. But I think that's an area we have to address. As far as what you charge for tuition, I think we're paying the busing. Weren't we paying the busing for a while?
For Sherman?
Sherman, we're paying the busing. We had, it was a decision of the Board to pay the cost of the bus to try to attract more students here. And that is taken off of the tuition revenue.
Right.
We don't benefit from any of this tuition.
Right, I know.
In the sense of the school board budget, it always gets passed back to each proportionally town based on that same calculation.
I think the only way I can attract students is you have to be something different. We have to, we have to have something that people want. And I don't know, maybe this year we can work on that. After we see what happens with the referendum, maybe as a board, we can sit down and find out, what can we do to this structure that we can attract people?
Michelle?
If we're talking for next year, I'm just wondering, Bob, if the Board wanted to change that number, what's the timing on that? What have parents been told for next year? Or does it, is there any kind of timing issue?
It really doesn't, I think we have one student right now that's a non-resident student that's in the district. And that student is scheduled not to be with us next year, from what I understand. So it's not like we have, you know, once we, once we get some preliminary audit of numbers out on that schedule that I referenced, that's when we make the calculation up. It usually happens July timeframe or so, end of July. If there's a need where we have somebody who's here, we give them an indication of where that number's going to be based on a preliminary number, but we do tell them that. And we're usually a little on the high side just so we don't, and I tell them that as well. It's a higher number, I don't want to come back to you with a low-ball number and then suddenly come back with a high number. But when the situation arises where somebody's going to continue with us, we do try to inform them towards the end of the year where we think it will be.
It's an interesting point because of that 20% that's sending their kids to private schools, you know, some of that is just a cultural thing. There are people, and I've heard people in the region who've said things along the lines of, you know, why would you send a kid to public school if you could afford a private school? It's just a matter of the way people think about education in their wallets, you know? So you're never going to get everybody, but you're right, it would be advantageous to make sure that we don't have people who really scrimp and save and scrape to be able to put their kids in private school because they have either a lack of faith in our school or a lack of, or a sense, a lack of allure towards putting their kids here. You know, one of the things we often talk about is that you get a, regardless of how we talk about per pupil cost, you get a private school and education from this public school because we are so small. And then even when we have conversations about tuitioning out, students from this school are changing the system, which is what we obviously talk about. We talk about, well, just remember that even though there are attributes as far as perhaps opportunities in surrounding towns, school systems, those are entirely different than ours. So you're getting into more of a mainstream American concept of public school where they might be excellent facilities, but not everybody in them knows your name. You know, only the people who deal with you every day would know your name. It's not the entire, all the staff, all the administrators, all custodial workers all know you. So there is a corollary to that, which would be that people in these surrounding areas, for whatever reason, might be excited to send their kids here because of the different nature of our public school system. And that making our tuition more attractive to them might help with that. And it might not. But in the same way that, you know, there are people, I'm not sure how it is in Washington, but I know Roxbury for Newtown and Bridgewater for Brookfield, there are some families who send their kids to the Catholic schools there because they're a good deal. They're not as expensive as the private schools are, and for whatever reason, they've wanted them out of our system, which is unfortunate. But those are very competitive rates that those schools offer. And what I would like to try is for us to offer a real competitive rate. It's not, you know, you look at it in terms of what kind of angst you're going to cause in parents who say, "Hey, my taxes are higher than that," or people who have a deal with Sherman to send their kids here and have to pay more. But despite the fact that the money doesn't come to, through the Board of Education, the money does go to help offset tax costs to the towns. So I would think, I would like to try to set a rate that is highly competitive with other schools. Because, you know, there's issues with closing schools in near us in New Milford, they might want to send their kids to Bridgewater or to WPS. There's, there's the proximity of crowded schools like Brookfield and Bridgewater and Woodbury and Southbury to Roxbury. So I would think that seeing as what we're dealing with now, in the near future, are issues of per pupil cost, all it does is change the per pupil cost and add money to the budget to the towns, the whole issue. So I'd like to propose that we offer a, we try a 60% discount, I mean, a 60% rate as opposed to 90%. We bring that 17 and that, I forget what the other rate is. If we bring 17, the 17, let's shift the number here, for ED001, that we have, let's say, I may have these numbers wrong, but we have 20,000 for K-8 and we have 17,000 for 912. And I think that we, and that's the, as opposed to taking 10% off of that, we take 40% off of that. And we should also surprise Sherman too, because we have a dearth of Sherman students. We used to get a lot more Sherman students than we do now.
They don't have them.
Huh? All right, hold on, hold on. Whatever, we used to have 30s and now we only have, you know, in the low, low double digits from Sherman, maybe even less. So this would be attractive to them as opposed to saying, oh, we're handing money back that we didn't have. We may actually get more kids. And remember, it doesn't cost us any, if this is such an influx, then we can change our whole thinking about student population here. If it's not an influx, it will really help the fact that we have to educate a certain number of kids regardless. Adding a few more gives us maybe not 100% income as of tax-wise, but 60% is better than zero for being able to educate more kids. So my movement is to offer a 60% reduction as opposed to the current 90% reduction and have that also affect the current negotiations with Sherman. Is there a second?
I can put those two again.
Well, I would feel, I mean, we don't have to, but I wouldn't want-
You'd have to open that contract up with Sherman.
Yeah, I wouldn't want Sherman to have a negotiated contract and then find out that we're offering everybody else, even other people in Sherman. Wouldn't that be the case? All right. To be able to send their kids here for a non-negotiated rate.
The town of Sherman pays that.
Yeah.
Right, it's not an individual.
All right. Hold on, hold on. There's been a motion, has it been seconded? All right.
It has been seconded.
It has been seconded. All right, let me, let me, let me make it separate. It has been seconded. All right, second. I want to amend my motion.
I have a point of order. It's not on the agenda for action as new business. It is information only under the Secretary of Superintendent's report.
Well, I mean, I'm going to speak against this, Alan. Not that I necessarily disagree with it, but to, right, to ask us to act on this without any investigation by our business manager and a report as to what this means for us, I think it's, I think it's premature. We don't have any rush to have to do this. If you want to flesh it out, that's fine, but to ask the Board to make this kind of change with nothing in front of us and no analysis, I don't think is responsible. All right, well, we can, we can, if we can put it on the next agenda with analysis, I mean, we can, we can show the surrounding towns prices. We have this document about, which I thought was a report on the issue. But we don't know what your motion will do to our budget, our, how it affects contracts that we have. I mean, I'm not prepared to approve a motion because, just speaking for myself.
Well, but my point is, it's not even on the agenda.
That's, we'll take it, but I mean-
Well, all right, so are you pressing with your motion?
Well, I won't press that motion if we can get this on the next agenda and talk about it as far as the effect it will have. Because clearly-
I'm trying to do a survey of surrounding, as I understand, that's what you would like to see.
Yeah, we did do it.
I've done that in the past.
Last year.
But it's, it needs to be updated, everything needs to be updated. So you've got good apples to apple.
I know, I guess the thing is what I'm saying is we want to make it, we want to make it, you know, ice cream to apples. We want it to be-
Well, I'm just, I'm perfectly willing not to do that.
Right. I guess it, clearly, I think the biggest overlap would be the fact that I added the Sherman aspect because I didn't want to raise apples there. So maybe the appropriate question is before, you know, dropping this motion entirely or trying to amend it, or just asking it to be, give us a chance to prepare better for it having on the next agenda, would be, how do you foresee, knowing these contracts, how do you foresee this would affect contracts? Would it be?
Well, the contract that's in question would have to be negotiated again with the town of Sherman because it's a contract between two parties. Otherwise, you, I'm not a lawyer, you will not only change a contract, even though it might be favorable to them.
Right.
Okay?
But you don't foresee-
I don't think that's something that you normally would do. And if you were to do it, you might want to take the opportunity to extend the contract since there's only one year in it anyway.
Right, we all, we shouldn't do that with any of these plans to give people the confidence that it's not a one-year deal.
Well, I mean, Sherman has a five-year contract rolling, right? And it's set, it's provided in the contract.
Right.
So Alan, what is your position? One price, another another. You're asking me to put it on the next agenda?
Yeah, I think if it makes Valerie feel better that we have it as an actionable item next time, that would be, I think, more correct. But also, I want to make sure that we have all of the information there because, you know, it is March, it would be good for people to know that if we do move this way, we make plans. And I don't foresee any problem logistically negotiating with Sherman because huge people are really happy when you bump their ways. They don't go away, they say, and they may say what's the catch, we'll talk about it, but still. So I would, as I say, I would prefer that we don't drag this out further than the next meeting, but it does make sense. So I would withdraw my motion and if we could agenda this for the next meeting, that would be great.
Is the second withdrawn?
Withdrawn.
Thank you. Valerie?
Well, I do think we're missing an important element here, which is the town leaders because it's their money. And so along with some information about surrounding towns, we don't act too, I think it's a great idea. I mean, as your-
Yeah, the goal is-
Plan B is wonderful, but I think that we have to remember, all tuition income goes to the towns. And once we begin down this road, we have to be prepared for perhaps larger expenditures and no offset in income because, once again, all income goes to the town. So they have to have some opinion about this. And I'd rather see this on the agenda of the business meeting.
Yeah. Michelle?
I was just going to say that I think it's a great idea and I'd be glad to have it on our next agenda. And I think it would be, it would be good to have the contracted permission, but I also think that since we paid for the bus to Sherman and we wouldn't be doing that for other tuition students, it would be okay to have two separate rates going because that 15% could cover the cost of that bus, because the towns paid for that bus, so.
All right. Any progress?
Yeah, Mr. Collet, we really have to get back to what I said. In order to sell this building, you need to be something special that everybody else isn't. Nobody's going to tuition in kids to a building that offers exactly what they get in their own town, spend 10, 15, whatever it is. Somehow get the superintendent and staff together, either build a new model, come up with something that makes this school system unique. That's what you need to do. That's why people go to private schools. They feel that you-
All right, well, Michelle, I agree with both. Feel this school is unique in many ways yesterday.
I was just going to say, because I agree as well, that I think that it's an important conversation to have. And I also think that what Peter's saying is important, really, if this is decided, to really make a package and a plan that we can then market like a private school does. But you have to really be thoughtful about it sort of when you're, when you're offering a discounted rate, so to speak. And you're also marrying the two by saying, but this is what we have. And so really being creative and thinking outside of us and using this as a plan to really come up with something dynamic that we can, I think we are dynamic anyway, I'm selfish and I'm biased about that. But I think it's important to bring the two together so that not only we're just saying, oh, we're going to lower the tuition price, but really creating something dynamic that we can market.
All right, Alan?
Yeah, I think that's a great, I think it's great. I don't necessarily think it needs to be simultaneous, you can start this, this is the easy part, when we build the dynamism after. Because we may, you know, we may pluck the, as they say, the low-hanging fruit now and then the dynamic stuff will cause higher picks.
Or just start something.
But not wait, right, but not wait.
Start something that you can bring together.
Right. Market what we have, yeah.
Which we have a lot of it. We do.
Okay. Any answer?
Excellent.
All right, thank you. And moving on to committee reports, 5-1. I'm sorry, do you have any progress?
I'm done, thank you.
All right. Committee reports, Alan, maybe?
Communications? That'd be great to be able to put a new price tag on communications. Newsletter, the submissions underwear, that goes Friday. And I'll be nagging any staff members who haven't submitted arguments, articles. Submitted their briefs, submitted articles by, let's say Wednesday, I'll start sending out emails there and then we'll all start putting it together. Emails, articles and pictures, of course.
All right, thanks. Education, Michelle?
We met last week, or last, whenever our last meeting was, we heard about the AP program. Next on the agenda is Project Lead the Way, which is our tech program in the middle school. Sheila Genvino will be presenting it, I'm assuming that that hasn't changed, so.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Education connection report, facilities? Or did that already, I'm sorry, finance, Valerie?
We met prior to this meeting. We are tracking well in the budget year with so far about eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars balance that is nonencumbered. Expect to be at our one percent level at fiscal year end. A few issues, you know, we have overuse in the legal audit and professional because we are obviously employing architects to help us with our project. However, that will go away in terms of the operating budget if we are successful in the referendum. And then a portion of that, of course, would be part of that cost and some of that will be reimbursed by the state. Michelle pointed out good news in that we have at this stage in March sixty thousand left in our heating oil bill because good old Bob locked in, he budgeted three dollars and fifty cents a gallon, but we're paying three oh six, which I think is ridiculously low. So we have sixty thousand left in that budget. That's not year end, but it's, it's, it's March and that's good. And we still indeed have funds remaining in the educational instructional supplies that we usually do like to keep for year end. Then we proceeded to the All-Star Transportation Contract, which has to be on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, next business meeting, a presentation. We have some really good information from Bob. He has negotiated with All-Star Transportation. He gave us comparable costs, Burdian costs in other towns. The highs of some of those other towns per bus per day, three hundred and seventy dollars one town. And he is working on two hundred and seventy is what we pay now and an increase of two eighty-two. So we're well below some neighboring towns in some other areas. And it seems to be an extremely good deal, but we should have that on the agenda so we can approve that contract.
All right.
I would suggest, I don't know, the next meeting or next business meeting. And everyone will get information as they have already for the tuition method, methodology. And we had our budget presentation tonight, which is, I thought, outstanding. And we were all heavily involved in the preparation of that. And Bank of America Merrill Lynch has decided not to welcome our government-related public fund retirement accounts. So we're going to have to go out and, and get someone else to honor our pension plan. But then we will leave to Bob to do at some future date. Bank of America is out of that business, at least in terms of public entities. And that's it.
All right, are you suggesting, Valerie, with regards to the budget, that, and we don't have to do this now, but that we set a special meeting or do you think we can discuss the budget just in the course of regular meetings? Either tonight?
I don't, I don't think we need a special meeting. I would suggest that unless, I mean, we, we usually go over it in the course of a business meeting or some regularly scheduled, like the twenty-fourth or the thirty-first. Spend some time just going over it, discussing and maybe adopting it. And perhaps that's also a good time for us to talk about the All-Star contract and maybe even tuition.
Maybe we'll have time for that in our business. I don't know what you want to...
The twenty-fourth is the next meeting. The thirty-first is a retreat. It's not a board meeting. It's, I mean, it's a board meeting, but it's retreats. So we were really going over the common core standards, the update on our curriculum and the new assessment. So we have a full agenda and also the board handbook. So we have a full agenda for the thirty-first. I can put it on the twenty-fourth and I think if we can't get through it, we'll schedule a special meeting.
Okay, that sounds good.
Just a discussion of the budget, just for, just a statement to say that our procedure normally is that the board discusses the budget and the board approves a budget. It then goes to public hearing, public meeting, board comes back, takes a final approval of the budget and asks the budget to go to...
And that public meeting, I think, is April seventh?
Yes, it is.
So it's going to have to be before that?
Right.
All right. That's what we're going to try. All right, thank you, Valerie. Any questions you have? All right, moving on, negotiations and upgrades on here. I know, having on that committee, though, we have received word that we are going to start negotiating with our nurses, but we have not started yet. Other than that, there's no other negotiations. Policy, anything, Michelle?
Yeah, we have several policies on the agenda tonight and we also met last month. We had a good meeting. We had the nurses and Kathy Corolla there to talk about the letter. Did we all receive that letter? From a parent, Mr. Murphy, about allergies in food and stuff. So we, it was a great meeting. We came up with a proposal and some language that we'll be coming to the board and food very soon.
All right, then with that, let's move on to old business, six-one, second reading policy five-one-one-four, suspension on expulsion process. Michelle?
Okay, this is the second reading. It reflects the amendment or the change that was voted on. If you go to the second page, which is five-one-one-four B. We had, remember everyone, we had that conversation about the firearms. We did not want any student, or a student bringing in any firearm, antique included. So just, if you want to review the language, it's number eleven to make sure that what we did reflects what was intended, but I believe it does. It just includes antique firearm as a weapon. So that is there. That is the only change from the first reading. All of the rest of the policy remains the same as the first reading.
Valerie?
Move to adopt as a second reading?
Your second?
Second.
I'll give it to Susan. Is there any further discussion?
I just had a point, because we just had our fifth grade play and they had swords, fake swords. But like, was that legal?
Well, the student didn't bring it in and this is only for students bringing it in.
Okay. Because you needed the sword for it to work.
Adult staff member prop master would have brought it in.
Yes, they borrowed it.
I don't see that it comes under here anymore. Yeah, this is, this is a...
It's a weapon.
A fake sword.
But also, you know, this, but this is suspension of expulsion, so you can't dispel...
Still can't bring your snowmobile. The other thing I have to say.
Is there anything else?
Aircraft.
I'm sorry, helicopter?
Well, that includes supporting equipment, fencing equipment.
I'm sorry?
That includes sporting equipment to include fencing equipment.
I'm sorry, Kelly, that includes sporting equipment for what?
Fencing.
Sporting fencing.
Oh, fencing.
We don't have fencing. I, I think anything that's considered a weapon, if a student wants to bring it in, they need to get permission first.
Is that a weapon or...
Could be.
Well, since we don't have a fencing club, at this point, it would probably be considered a weapon.
They're, they're blunt. They're sporting equipment, but TSA can throw somebody sporting equipment, not weapons, but... You could bring a sword on a plane and hit them.
Not a cross.
I don't think that would make sense. I'll leave my accent out.
Is there anything else?
There are fencing, ASAP offers fencing classes.
Right, which would, in that context, that would be...
And safety as well, so.
But...
They bring the sporting equipment.
Would someone perhaps have their bag of their sporting equipment and not understand that that would be considered a very serious offense under this particular...
I suppose it's possible, sure.
Yeah.
They don't read the policy. And I'm sure that something like that would be taken. This is an expansion, suspension expulsion policy. I assume that any board that was hearing or the administration was making a decision whether to bring somebody up on a suspension expulsion would take into account the circumstances. If somebody was bringing in sporting equipment, they would take that into account as to whether to proceed under this section. It's my assumption.
Well, this is a definition, this is the, this is a list of what is considered weapons. If I were the parent of that child and I read this policy and I know it's in the handbook, you know, it's a little bit... If the whole policy's not in the handbook, it is certainly highlighted in the handbook, I would get special permission before I sent my child to school for it. It's just common sense, I would say.
And I don't...
Just on the, the same vein of common sense, I think that, you know, sporting equipment is intended for sporting purposes and because it's not commonly thought of as a threat for a weapon, at least the way it's currently used. I think we'd be fine. I mean, I think we could, you know, I've played Clue before, so I know even candlesticks can be used as weapons. But I don't think we want to start putting in anything that possibly could be used as a weapon that students could bring in. Although we might find it...
I want to make this more difficult, but I think unless, unless it specifically prevents it. I mean, I was a fencer in high school and you're not going to believe what we call their swords. We call them weapons. So it's not going to help. We never called them our pieces of sporting equipment. So I think, I think unless it specifically includes it as, you know, fencing blade, I think we're safe.
Yeah, it's okay.
But it's a good point, though, because we don't want to get so crazy that, you know, somebody brings in a picture of it and gets us pinched.
All right, is there anything else? And all those in favor of approving five-one-one-four, a suspension and expulsion process policy as a second reading? Say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Unopposed? Is there any abstentions?
Won't say why.
I'm sorry?
He doesn't.
Won't say why.
I think the issue with regard to the antique firearm is silly. If a gun is non-operational, now a student has, and there's several of these. Student has permission, makes arrangements, it's the absolute prohibited. I think it's just...
A gun is a gun is a gun.
I understand where you're at. That's where I'm at. Okay. The motion passes. So moving on to new business, first reading, seven-one, first reading policy five-one-three-one-point-six alcohol, drugs and tobacco.
All right, this policy is being drafted for everyone. It's part of a whole series we did on updating anything that had to do with smoking, since smoking is banned and it's banned in public places. And I think there should probably have been a strikeout in the title where it says, "and tobacco" in red. What our old policy had was a tack on at the bottom that referred to smoking and Cape. Just the tobacco was more encompassing than student smoking. So if you go through this policy, it's a little bit lengthy. Our, the current policy we have on the books was written in two thousand and seven or approved in two thousand and seven and hasn't been touched since then. All of the red language is coming straight from Cape. Most of it does not, I shouldn't say all of it. There, I'll show you where it's not. The big paragraphs come straight from Cape. And they do not substantially change the intent of our policy. So we, as a committee, adopted the language that Cape had because it's based on up-to-date laws and has been vetted with every year that these policies are in existence and they're in use in districts, Cape updates their versions because of either problems that have been run into or to clarify places where they may have become, where there may have been issues. So we just adopted what Cape recommended. Places, the pol, the committee added language under illegal activities. The word drug facsimile was added and that was at the request of our Dean of Students and Administration. Under, anywhere they were talking about tobacco, e-cigarettes, we added e-cigarettes to be very clear that that's also included. I think that is, I think that's it for the included language. There was also some issue with this policy. It had been cut and pasted into the website incorrectly. So we just, we just cleaned up the order a little bit and made sure that it flowed the way it was supposed to.
Was there a motion to approve it for the first reading? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's moved to second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Oh, it's been a long, long time, but I'm so happy to see that we're prohibiting tobacco use on any student, school grounds as well as buildings. We've had, we've told you to discuss the patio for far too long. So thank you for that phrase.
Anyone else?
What is a drug facsimile?
Something you're trying to pass off as a drug, whether it's a bag of oregano that used to look like something else or any kind of crushed up classroom that's supposed to look like something else.
It's a fake.
Anyone else? All right, it's moved to second. Are there all those in favor of approving the five-one-three-one-point-six optimal use drugs and tobacco for a first reading? Say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? I understand. All right, it passes. Thank you. All right, seven-two, first reading policy five-one-four-one-point-two-one, administering medications.
All right. This is coming to us, if you, sort of interesting, if we'd like to, if you're looking at your policies, scroll down to the bottom, you can see that we update this almost every year based on changes in regulations. So the change for this year is a paragraph about glucagon, which can be administered for students with diabetes. So it's just, it's a paragraph in red, explains about the nurse's role in glucagon injections. And this is now law.
Motion to approve for a first reading. So moved?
Second.
Second, Susan? What was it, Valerie?
Valerie.
Oh, Valerie, I'm sorry.
Yeah, basically it has a signing, a specific individual with that authority and capability and responsibility.
All right, any further?
Does that undergo training for administering?
I'm not sure whether it's training, it's not if they, they would be the person who is capable of doing this.
Usually at the beginning of the year, any student who are diabetic or have any special 504 needs, the nurse will train them, whether it's an EpiPen, whether it's glucagon, whatever it is. And they're pretty good at that, especially when they go on trips, those children or whatever. So you get updated training also.
I think we went through it last year on coaches and trainers and all that.
All right, anyone else? All right, and all those... Wait, wait, I'm sorry. Oh, Peter, I'm sorry.
Just a quick, what role does the board determine for these rulings and regulations? Does he do file review on everything that the board, or the board file approves?
No, we have a, we have a contract with Cape's policy service and so it's reviewed by their lawyers, which is more cost-effective because then we have, all the districts are sharing that knowledge.
Got you. Anything else? All right, then all those in favor of approving five-one-four-one-point-two-one, administering medications policy for first reading? Say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? I understand. All right, it passes. Thank you. All right, we've done seven-three. Four, request, consider request of Gun Memorial Library to use Washington Primary School for the Washington, Connecticut Antique Show, waiving policy prohibiting alcoholic beverages. I will say that, let's see...
She, she, I probably shouldn't really have to make it, but if you wanted to see it, she'd be happy to come to the next meeting.
But Jean Chapin, who's the executive director of the Gun Library, did contact me and asked me about this. And she asked whether it needed an annual review or a decision by the board or whether since it was something we had previously done, she could continue with that. I told her I thought that it was not something that could be just rolled over, that it was, insofar as it's the policy of the board, that there's no alcohol on school grounds, that it required, in my estimation, a specific way to reach here. So that's why it's on the agenda. Alan, move to approve?
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? I, I just know that Dr. Custody may be able to speak to this. It's a well-received event. We've heard a lot of good things about it.
Not only is it well-received, this past year, they really made a concerted effort to get the students involved. So in your packet, you'll see a beautiful cherry blossom artwork that was the backdrop as soon as you walked in. The students, not only from Washington Primary, but from the high school, were able, the art program, were able to come and see the exhibits. And they allowed the PTO, I believe, at Washington Primary to have a little bake sale that they set up, so they made some money. So they've really tried to incorporate and I highly recommend it. It's been a wonderful program.
All right, I just add that, something Greg always adds, that you instruct them that there to be no alcohol on the premises while any students are present during this regular school day.
Yes.
Peter?
Is this held in the cafeteria? Is this held in the cafeteria or the gymnasium? Does the board liability policy cover things like that?
We haven't looked into that yet. Last year, yes. Anything else? All right, then all those in favor of request of the Gunn Library to use the Washington Primary School for their Washington Connecticut Antique Show, waiving the policy prohibiting alcoholic beverages for the 2014 show, which I understand is a fall sometime, I believe? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying? All right, it passes. 7-5, excuse me, item 7-5, discussion of the FY15 budget proposal. Is there something that we want to start tonight or?
I don't.
Anybody want to make a motion? Okay.
Probably a study, don't you think?
7-6, this is the item now, child, school, and after-school childcare.
I, I put this on the agenda because there was a little bit of back and forth about it today, two issues, one at a time, I guess, back and forth about it today by email. And I thought that we should address it in our public meeting as opposed to over email. And also, I was concerned with the superintendent's concerns. So, first off, there's two issues. There's Cool School, and then we'll get to the second issue, which is the education connections, pre and after-school program. Now, with the Cool School, they had a, as Pat said earlier in her superintendent's report, and as we have in our handout, someone in Bridgewater who I guess, I don't know who it is, but what I understand, they have, somehow, they know somebody who works at WFSB and they said, hey, why don't you profile our Cool School? And I guess there was a amount of back and forth, and it turns out it's Mark Dixon. That's the name of the person, I guess.
Mark Dixon, I thought it was the reporter.
He's the reporter. I don't, there's somebody else, a producer there, I don't know. Anyway, the idea is that they thought it would be great to, to promote Burnham. What they do, if you go to the WFSB website and see, they've been doing this for ages and they do it every Friday at night. I looked at some of them and they intro, they're like, hey, it's Friday, we made it, the week's almost over. You know what that means? You need a cool school to actually do this every week. And what they do is they, my wife worked at Waterbury Arts Magnet School, and when she was there, they did that school. So, what, one of the concerns was that, we wanted to promote the whole region. But unfortunately, it's called Cool School and they promote and talk about schools, not school districts. And maybe someday with extra capable access time, they might have a cool district program. But at the moment, I don't think that it's, it makes sense to stop them from doing this because, from what I understand, the principal was happy enough, as both of us in the town government were happy enough that our town school has been promoted. I don't think we should say, you know, only once, if one school is promoted or noticed in any way publicly, then that means that all the other schools have to be, or forget about it. Because there are a lot of schools in the Tooton Hills District that aren't promoted, and the Tooton Hills Elementary School was. Or in other, other districts, if you go on the website and see. I think it's awfully hard to ever promote an entire district. You're always promoting the individual schools in the district anyway. So, make sure you do that in a balanced way. I'm sure that as time goes by, if people want to suggest Booth or WPS or Chappal Valley School to Cool School, I'll get on the roster too. I did? All right. Did or?
Oh, no, I didn't, no, for the job post.
So, as I said, I just don't understand the hesitation to this. And I, I can't imagine why we would try to stop one of our schools from being promoted. That's why I wanted to talk about it, because I didn't think that the arguments that I heard, they were.
I'll just say that this has been brought to my attention, just things that I want the board to consider. First, I'm not sure about the process here. I believe that this is something that should have gone to the superintendent. She can speak for herself, but she thinks, she feels that she was, this is something that was fairly new on her plate. And then against the other question the board can consider is, is this a board decision or is this the superintendent's decision? But I just throw that out there.
Well, I think it's a, it's a great idea. I think it's very cute. I see that it would be great to have the region mentioned, but you're highlighting a particular grouping of kids at a particular school. I don't have any problem with that. I don't, I think it is a superintendent's decision because it is her, her total responsibility. The only concern I have is, do we have the permissions of the individual students, that they can be photographed, they can be on TV? I think that's something we have to look at. Because usually, even when you're walking down a New York City sidewalk and they're doing some filming, you've got to be alerted to the fact that your image is being taken. So, I would just want to make sure that we're protecting the children. There might be some reason that some parent doesn't want that child photographed.
Susan?
That's fair. I believe that paperwork is part of the initial packet of paperwork that is still in the beginning of the school year, but that's certainly fair.
It says to make sure.
I think it is, you know, I, I think it's nice that people from the community have an opportunity to advocate and speak up. So, it is, you know, I think it's, I think it would be nice. I like the idea, you know, mention the region, mention the other schools in the region. Certainly, you know, it's a solid part of Region 12 and, you know, see where it goes. Do we have final approval of, of what is aired? Input for what is aired? I mean, what, I don't know how any of that works.
It's a live show, right?
It's live.
All right, hold on. Dr. Custino?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, everyone brings up great points. I found out about this Thursday for the first time, then Friday that we were accepted, and that the meeting is already scheduled for, I think it's April 3rd in the morning. And I have not had a chance to look at any paperwork, have had a chance to, to, to do anything. I'm just getting emails. And I'm going to be honest with you. We, I, I'm not a reactive person. I am a proactive person. And I don't have a problem if it's just Burnham, if that's what, you know, they want to do. What I said in the email is that I would like to discuss it with the reporter, okay? But this is my issue more than anything. And I try to keep this away from the board a little bit. We are at a very stressful time, okay? The referendum has everyone really, really nervous, staff, parents, administration, making sure we do everything right. The teachers are trying to get through a new assessment, okay, where Teresa goes every other day to a meeting and things that were supposed to be here two weeks ago is still not here. The state has not even yet given us the, the new handbook for teachers, the teacher manual on the new assessment, and the assessments are starting. Okay, then you go and you deal with the state and the common court and how now there's a big public hearing on Wednesday. And we're gonna talk about the common court that we've been working on endlessly. There's a lot going on, okay? And then we have the teacher evaluation. I, I don't want to do it in April. I'm happy to do it in May, in June. I don't have a problem with that. But to me, it muddies our waters, and I don't want to muddy the waters anymore. And that's my feeling. I found out about this Thursday. I wasn't at work on Friday. Now, it's Monday and I'm getting emails from people, why aren't you doing this? What if, I mean, you know, that's not, we have procedures. We have things moved in a certain way. And that's what I'm trying to do. And this has nothing to do with Burnham. This has to do with the issue of anybody coming to me. I do it to Kim all the time. She calls me all the time. Mrs. Gallivan says, can I do this? Can I do that? And I said, write me a report. Why am I what's going on? And we'll talk about it. I do it all the time because that's not the way I work. And that's my issue with this. It has nothing to do with not wanting to promote people. I mean, you know, I know Kathy Colletta, you know, wants to support her school, but she's right in the middle of a new assessment and a lot going on. And that's just my feelings about it.
Peter?
Well, I mean, it sounds like a good idea, but I would wait till after this, all this, Mr. Garcia's all over, we get through all the referendums and everything, and have Alan bring it back. I really think this should have flowed through, I mean, I think the point that the superintendent is making, that it starts with them, finishes with them, not with members of the public. If they want to initiate something, they should initiate it through the superintendent in concert with the superintendent, not through board members, not through me or any other board members. It has to come through the proper chain of command. And I think that's what the superintendent is telling. I have no problem with it, I mean, but I do agree with the superintendent and I'm willing to wait and discuss it after we get done with all the referendums.
Donna?
I don't know why this isn't a quick and enthusiastically short on the superintendent. We're talking about a couple minutes of live television on a Friday morning, or a couple of minutes of video being taken on a Friday morning. We're, it's, it should be an enthusiastically embraced opportunity to promote the excellence of our kids, of our schools. It shouldn't be that complicated. I don't like hearing that our, our staff or our, our schools are so, I don't know, not fully functional that they can't do this kind of thing along with all the other things that every other school in the state is doing. Because every other Friday, there will be another Cool School, and they can manage to get all this done and still have the WFSB crew come for a few moments and celebrate their school. So, why can't we? I, I'm a little alarmed at what I was just hearing about how, well, there's too much on our school's plates though. Also, I think in this environment, you have to make consider that not doing this report or not allowing what's already an enthusiastically embraced idea to go forward might be seen as a very negative thing on the part of the Bridgewater community. And when you're on a referendum in the past, maybe that's not the most politic appearance to have it made.
Susan?
We were just talking about marketing a long ago, and this is, this is a great opportunity. It's a great opportunity to have a moment in a, in a line like. I understand, I hear the pragmatic concerns of interrupting the educators' flow of the day in that moment, in that time. Not on board with, with holding off. There's no reason to hold off. There are parameters that are set out. There's nothing about consolidation that needs to be indicated one way or the other. There's, there's nothing about the politics that need to be highlighted. Wipe all that away and focus on the school, the teachers. Nice to have an opportunity to publicly pat them on the back. And that's, that's the spirit of the nomination. That's where it came from. They do a good job and it's been recognized by someone in the community, you know, and, and it flowed, it flowed the opposite way of the food chain. But it's a, it's a, it's a great opportunity and perhaps would, if given parameters, it could lessen any impact to, to the teachers.
Alan?
I mean, this is the kind of time to bring it up because I, just looking at this email that we all have here. As it said, they, the reporter loved the pitch, wants to come and see the school. It's a site visit. After they do the site visit, they're hopeful they'll approve the next round and do the story. So, it's not as if, I mean, there's.
But the issue, Alan, I got this on March 6th. I didn't include the other ones. On Friday, okay, not only do I have that he's coming, I have the date and time, I have that Kathy Colletta is gonna work on all of this stuff. You know, I haven't talked to this person. I am not squashing this. I am not. I'm saying there are procedures, there's things we do at the regional office so that we make sure that we are following what has to be followed. I haven't seen a packet. I haven't talked to anyone. These people are dealing with people who aren't even our employees at this point. I mean, you know, Kathy Colletta hasn't met with this person. No one has met with this person. And I'm getting emails that, you know, why am I holding this up? I'm not holding it up.
He's coming to meet in early April. It's a month from now. That's when everyone will meet with this person. That's the problem.
A site visit doesn't have to be a tour.
Okay, all right, Sean?
I just wanted to say that it seems, it seems like a very nice, a nice thing, a great thing that we wouldn't want to prohibit. And I think that it's probably best to just let the superintendent see the paperwork, see the, see the information. I believe the test, the S-VAC testing is in March, is that?
No, it's, the elementary schools are doing it that week.
Oh, they're doing it that week?
Yes, there's two windows. The elementary school is doing it that week.
All right, I see. So, but maybe that date isn't set in stone. So, I see no reason, I see no reason for the board to weigh in on this now. I think what really just needs to happen is some procedure and paperwork with the superintendent and a form and let her weigh in on some timing that would work for the staff. I, I don't see the referendum as a big deal, but I see that testing is a big deal. Because the teachers are very nervous and I don't want our principal tied up with something the week of testing when, you know, they're working on making sure the computers are working. It's just a new format. It's all new. So, this is, this is fun, warm, fuzzy, and I think it's great. Maybe the next week, but maybe the superintendent, we just need to give the superintendent the time to, to, to look at it and find a ti, and talk to Kathy and find a time that works for them. And I'm pretty sure that if they are not even coming to look at the school for a month, that they're not, that this isn't that pressured. So, there's, there's time. I think we should just, I don't see why we need to weigh in anymore. We should just let the superintendent sort, sort it out.
Michael?
I agree with Michelle. I think that, you know, what you should take away from our input, Pat, is that it sounds like most of us are certainly in favor of the idea. But on the other hand, I think that you do have a lot on your plate. We realize that. And I think you have a right to decide what is best as far as the schedule. And I think it probably doesn't need to be as formal as maybe what we're thinking. I mean, it might be as simple as you literally calling our contact at WFSB and saying, that date won't work for my staff. Could we make it? Any other, let's compare calendars and see what might work. Usually, they're fairly flexible because they are taping.
And I'm happy to do that. But, you know, it has to be me and Kathy Colletta. That's who it has to be at this point. It's been brought to the superintendent and the principal's attention. We need to now move on this, okay? And, you know, we have a public hearing Thursday night. I mean, you know, I have to prioritize sometimes, you know. You know, it's not that this is not important. It is important. But there are, we're not a reactive, I'm not a reactive superintendent. I'm a proactive superintendent. And we have five important things that have to get done in the next couple of weeks that there's really no wiggle room. And I'm happy to meet with Mark. We can call tomorrow. We can make an appointment for him to come in and, you know, talk about his timeframe and, and make it work. I want us to, to be out there and let everybody know how wonderful Burnham is, and I want everybody to know how wonderful our schools are. But it has to, you know, I can't find out on a Thursday and then on a Monday be inundated by everybody's emails because they don't like I said, hey, let's, I mean, you know, and that's what happened today.
Donna?
I think we've discussed this enough. It's in your hands. You need the information. We're very concerned that all the dots be, you know, all the i's be dotted and the t's be crossed. I'd like to proceed on to another kind of, Ed Connection thing just suddenly hits. And I think it's great that we have a community that's making some nice suggestions. But to, to say all of a sudden, out of nowhere, that here is going to be now a survey sent home and a, and what looks to be a totally new activity at one of our schools. We don't, I mean, this is really par for the horse. I do think, we have to think about the cost of this. I've been looking, looking. I'm not seeing cost except a suggestion of cost that Ed Connection might survey. I think there's lots of big questions. I think there's some concerns by a local business owner who has every right to express her, her issues. But the point is, you don't just say, let's put on a show, you know? I mean, this has to go definitely through channels because we are now using our facility for reasons that we haven't sanctioned. for reasons that we haven't sanctioned. It could be a wonderful program. Evidently, we did this in the past. And what looked like a great program fizzled out. And then, what are you stuck doing? Are you sending buses to a program, to a school? One school, or two schools, not three? That, where, you know, that suddenly is not going to get any kind of population response two months hence, after the April break? I mean, this is definitely something that's got to go through the process. And we have plenty of time for the next school year, to see what the cost is, what's our liability, how this is going to happen, what's the impact, and how can we get all three elementary schools to be part of this? It could be wonderful, but it could be a real pain in the neck.
Alan.
Well, all right, putting things through channels, sometimes it's just a great way to slow everything down, because the point is, is that we are going through channels, we just don't like hearing a channel being put up as, like, oh, this isn't going to work, because we have, as Pat said, a lot of concern. So once something is fully formed, then it goes to the next step. And now it's fully formed, it's at the next step. There aren't a lot of...
It's fully formed?
I'm not talking to you, I'm actually talking to the board, and I recognize you. It's fully formed, and this is actually something that has its own process till it comes to this point. And it's actually a pilot program. It also is something that is run by Education Connection, which is one of our allies in other ways, in fact, their name appears on our agendas all the time, so it's not as if this is a fly-by-night company. Second of all, the cost aspect of this is borne by the parents themselves, which is why this survey is so important. Furthermore, we had, you know, this was kind of a joint town of Bridgewater and PTO process for the benefit of our kids and their parents, and also because we're always talking about how the lowest populated school in the region is Bridgewater, and we want to do something about that. In Burnham, we want to do something about that. So we had always looped the other two PTOs in, the elementary school PTOs in, and also involved middle school Bridgewater kids who, for them after school, also take part in age-specific programs for them at Burnham as well. So as this kind of pilot program works, that Bridgewater's putting forth, it could happen in each of the other towns as well. Roxbury and Washington do the same thing in their schools. Everyone was on board, except that, as I said, the concept of a lot of concerns, the concept of the concerns are one of the owners, or the owner, I forget, of a private company in Roxbury, who a lot of Roxbury and Bridgewater kids go to for after, it's daycare and it's baby care, and it's also post, pre and post-school daycare. So far, the, sorry, I have to listen to explain things as I talk.
It goes on all the time here, Alan.
Right.
So the point is that we, there's no overlap at the moment. We have 33 kids and 21 families interested, there's no overlap with the kids in Roxbury. Now, the issue of this being something that Booth kids could have as an option, has to do with the fact that if they're not already taking advantage of Children's Station, they could, for other reasons, take advantage of this possibility at Booth, at Burnham. And we realize that there are transperdication issues to work out. But the similar thing I want to say about this, as opposed to, as with the cool school aspect, is that these are things that are not cut and dry, they are in process, and each point where we want to introduce them and talk about them and make them happen. And we want people to be on board with making these things happen, as opposed to going, "Where did this come from? Don't bother with this now, we're too busy." That's what we want to change, and make this something that we all work towards enabling for the better of our students, and not be something that, you know, doesn't... In tech, we have something called "not my shop," which means if anybody outside comes up with some kind of invention or a different way of doing something, it's automatically "No, because it's not my shop." But I sense this from the reaction from the superintendent with these two plans. We want to make sure that she's on board, not that she has to add this to her already busy schedule and...
That's her job.
Yes.
That she's supposed to do these things, and review these things.
Right, but review as opposed to blanketly shoot it down, and say, "I'm not going to review this now until later." It has, there's a reason why this needs to be reviewed now, because of planning for next, for next year.
Let's, I have one question. This is for a proposal to start in the fall of 2014.
Yes.
It has to be decided tonight.
No, it doesn't have to be decided by us, but it has to be, the survey has to be...
I'm sorry, without us.
Well, we don't pay for this.
But it's the region's 12 buildings, 112 students.
Remember, reach turned out not to be ours to decide on before too, remember? It was brought to us as a courtesy, the whole decision about reach?
I don't know what you're talking about. I don't remember what you're talking about.
Reach, the whole pre-K aspect, remember, in terms of moving it to WPS? As it turned out, all that conversation that we had was moved, because it was something that could happen without us. But there are things that can happen without us, if they don't involve all the programs and policies.
But the superintendent was in charge of that.
Right, and I wanted her to be in charge of this, as opposed to just...
But she just told you because you're too busy.
All right. Hold on.
I just want to add a couple of things, because I don't want anybody to think that this just was brought to my plate. In the fall, I had meeting, a conversation, I don't think we met, with Carolyn, and I knew she was meeting with Ed Connection. At that point, I know that I was invited, the other schools were invited, but I was under the impression, from our conversations, it was just a Burnham program, and that middle school kids from Shapaw could be dropped off also, so it was a Burnham program. And that's why I approved doing the survey and finding out if parents were interested. Where it got muddy last week, okay, now I'm showing you, Monday, March 3rd, is when it was brought to my attention that now they want to invite Booth Free students, and that how, what about a bus, to bring the Booth Free kids to Burnham? And that's where I said, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, that's not what our original discussion was." Because now, it's not just a Burnham program. Now, you want, number one, to impact our budget, because we need a bus to go from Booth Free to Burnham, and number two, you now have, you know, opened up this can of worms at Booth Free, and I haven't had any conversations with anybody at Booth Free about it. So that's where I said, "Whoa, we have to calm down." So then, today I got another thing, you know, that we're ready to send this out, and I said, "Well, we have to calm down. I have to go back and look and make sure that, you know, we're okay with this." And that's why I said, "Whoa." It has nothing, again, to do with anything other than other people are involved. And the other piece of information I just want to share, is I was told that the owner of Children's Station was all for this and on board. I never talked to her, I think we only met one time before this, and at 9:30 this morning, she was in my office with a letter, we had a conversation. So there's a lot of unanswered questions, again, that I have been, it's thrown at me, and I'm supposed to just say, "Go ahead," and there's just too many moving parts. And that's why I just said, "Whoa." But I don't want anybody to think that, you know, that the Burnham people did come to me, we had conversations, but for me, it was just a Burnham program. And when it turned into other schools, that's when I said, "We have to stop and take a step back." That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Jennifer.
So when this was originally brought to my attention as the PTO president of Washington Primary School, Carolyn sent an email to myself and the PTO president of Booth. And very nicely, you know, said, "We want to do this, fantastic, do you want to join us in this meeting? We have Education Connections, or would you rather me go, and then I'll just come back and bring the information?" Myself and Paula both said, "Go to the meeting, thank you, if you want to send the information along after the meeting, great." And Carolyn did, so great, followed through, sent the information, and I forwarded it to the principal of Washington Primary School. Because personally, for me, it's not a decision that the PTO makes, it's something that I would need my principal at Washington Primary School to look over, to see what her concerns are, and therefore then take that and address them with Dr. Constantino, and then, quite frankly, and then decide from there what to do. And obviously, with the issues of the referendum, I just kind of left it in limbo, because I don't really know where we're going or what we're doing. Do I think the program is a great idea? Absolutely. But I think it's important, if Burnham wants to do it, it's fantastic. I have no problem with that, personally. However, what I do struggle with is that, I believe there was some quote in the newspaper that, you know, at the Bridgewater meeting, the uptown meeting, that, you know, Burnham's going through with it, and there was an interest of how many people, which again is great, how many kids want to do the program, and that Roxbury was open to it. And I kind of was feeling guilty, like, oh, you know, Washington Primary School's not included, but I didn't engage with Carolyn about it, so why would she assume that I was open to it? So I understand that. But I also know that the PTO president of Booth didn't pursue it either, that that was kind of left in limbo, because I believe she was kind of waiting to see what the referendum was doing. And she also knows that there's a business in her town that she doesn't want to, it's a delicate situation for her. So she wanted to make sure that with the PTO, that that was addressed as well, separate. So again, bringing Booth and Burnham together is great, as long as Booth is aware that they're being brought together through Burnham. And they don't necessarily know if that was the case. So for me, I think that I am going to leave this up to my principal to decide, because there's a lot of questions. It's a great program, what do you do when it's a snow day? That's still, does that get on the shoulders of the principal, or does that get on the shoulders of Education Connection? I don't know. Does, what do you do with the facility? What rooms are they going to use? There were a lot of questions and concerns, and for me, as a board member, I'd like to hear that. I'd like to hear what the proposal is, so that I know more about it, so that I'm aware of what is being offered at Burnham, and then what else can be offered at the other two towns. And again, I appreciate the, being so proactive to do this. I just think that there needs to be a lot of questions answered. Again, I think it does need to be presented to the board, so we have a full understanding of what exactly the entire program entails.
Better.
Oh, really? No, actually, that was Michael, but if you don't mind, just a clarification though. We did vote on the pre-K, it's in the minutes of February 25th, 2013, so indeed, this has to be a vote by the board to have this program enhanced. Just saying. Thank you.
Just a quick, quick point. I think in general, my response is a good one, I think it's a great idea. Obviously, I think it's okay for us to have questions and to get those questions answered. I don't think that's an unreasonable request. One of the things that I'd like to also think about is, I know we're constantly being asked as board members to think as a district, and I think, you know, to start it as a pilot program at Burnham is a great idea. However, I would like to be able to pull in Washington residents, because I'm sure there are Washington residents who have southerly mutes, who would be going nearby Burnham, that might want to take advantage of it. Now, we may decide as a board that the onus of those Washington residents might be on them to get their children to Burnham, but if you're driving by on your way north, why not stop? I think it's a wonderful program for all three of our communities to be able to offer, and I'd like to see us be able to pull in all the other towns as well, as Bridgewater.
Susan.
Well, I do, I do appreciate that it's been brought up, that this program has been brought to our attention before I do remember hearing about it. I think it speaks to the need in the different communities. What I, what I'm hearing is, it may have started as this pilot program, perhaps in Burnham, well, Burnham alone, but there's a lot of need out there, there's a lot of working families, and after-school care is key. And it sounds, this program will offer something that a child care program will not, and there's a bonus to that, especially if there's no cost to the school district. I think that's a, that could be a win-win, so it has, you know, there's something, there's something certainly worth pursuing.
I agree.
It's unfortunate that there's, there are conflicts with the Children's Station in Roxbury. You know, I will say that they are, because they are a children, a baby and toddler child care facility also. I know my older kids would not want to go to a place that watches babies and toddlers, it's a, you know, if I can use the word stigma, to be able to stay in place. But my oldest would go from Shapaw to Burnham, it's her hometown, it's her home school, she's been there, so, you know, that would be a little different, but it would certainly help working families. And we need to become flexible as a school board, as a school community, to offer or allow programs, investigate programs, that would facilitate working families. We need families in this area. And there is a dramatic lack of child care programs, and this is, this is a high-quality one, Education Connection. This is, it's been proven, they've run programs in other schools, after school, so this is not something that they are cutting their teeth on, this is something that they would be implementing. So I'm all for it. I think bravo for all the organization behind the scenes to bring it to this level. I am encouraged to hear open-mindedness for this. I think that there is such a response, that's an enormous number of families or children with the potential for more. So we can sort of hash out the issues, the specific issues, between going, between the towns, that kicks it up relative to the busing. I would say if a parent could bring their child from school to a child care, then they probably don't need the child care, you know, they're at work, you know? And we have to, we have to consider the likelihood of that. But it certainly sounds like a proven, successful program.
I agree. Todd.
Yeah, I agree that if Ed Connection would run one of their great programs in any of our schools, that's a welcome addition. And if Burnham and Bridgewater have organized two pilot programs, I think... That's great, that's a lot of initiatives. I would like to speak to the notion of competition that was brought up. I think that's something that this board hasn't taken into account at all, when we consider the impact of closing the three elementary schools. In my opinion, Burnham is an excellent property, it's excellently situated, and it's owned as a school. I not only think that a pre-K program and after-kid program will come to Burnham if we close that school, but that a private school will probably use that property and become another source of competition for us. I think that similarly, Roxbury School and, at least part of Washington School, will be used for some kind of child care, whether it's pre-K or an alternative school or after school program, because it's exceedingly hard to have any kind of a space approved that's already not grandfathered in for school use in the state's connect kids. Anybody who's tried to make a nonprofit or a profit-making child care or education-oriented program knows that it's almost impossible. And a school building in good condition, and all our, all our buildings are in good condition, that's pre-zoned for this use, will make them very attractive properties. And we will find that if these schools are closed, there will be competing activities coming in to offer services. That's something that we haven't really talked about, but it's a reality.
Jen.
I just would also like to just speak to the fact that I recognize that it could very well be a need as well in Washington as much as it is in Burnham and in Roxbury, doing that to Bridgewater and Roxbury. And by any means, am I not saying that this is something that Washington would not look at? I'm just saying that there are again, questions have to be answered, and I agree with you, I think Education Connection's a wonderful organization. I just would like to hear more about it, so that when we're talking to our parents and our community, we know exactly what we're, what we're getting, the information. And I also want, I want the teachers and the staff and administration at Washington Primary School to know what is going to be going on in the school. I want, I want our principal to feel comfortable. And I just feel like, for me, I want that to be presented to the board as well. So when we're saying it's a great thing, I want to know specifically how great is it, and what is it going to offer. So I'm not taking it off the table by any stretch... So I'm not taking it off the table by any stretch of imagination. I just want to be able to have a conversation. And I feel like right now, whether it's the reason or not, the referendum is really taking up a lot of its energy and time, and I think that's something we need to address, and I'm happy to do it. But I also want to just talk a little bit about this letter that Sarah wrote because I see here that she has in the past, has asked for a request for a bus from Washington to the children's station that's been denied. So, you know, again, I feel like Sarah was trying to meet a need in our community and wasn't, wasn't being allowed to do so. And so all I ask is that as a board, or if this is a decision, I don't know, that we be mindful about our community businesses and be mindful about how we speak about our community businesses because maybe some children, when they're older, may not want to go to the business because there are younger kids there. My daughter would love to hang out with the babies. So I think that, you know, again, we need to be thoughtful about how we speak about the community businesses when we're here at the table. And I also think that we should consider the entire region, all three schools.
Laura?
I think we should stop this conversation for now. Presentation at some Ed, Ed meeting, you know, in March or into April, talk about it then. We need a presentation by Ed Connection. I definitely want to have all these questions answered. I'd like to know a lot about the town answers, the liability, who's in charge of what, is the security, snow days, lots of questions. Let's get a presentation. We can't vote on it now. It's not an agenda for action. We must vote on it, as we've seen by what we did with the pre-K. And so why don't we just move on and schedule it for some meeting?
Ellen? We, we don't really have to do anything at the moment except not stop the process, which is underway. The idea is that survey needs to go out to see if there are interested parties in Roxbury. Now, as far as our feeling about, about this, the whole school age program is in the handout she gave, superintendent gave us. The fact that people have been working on this since October is not something that is, you know, sprung out of nowhere. In fact, I was in a meeting as a member of the government of Bridgewater with a member of PTO, a member of Kathy Colletta, and with a representative from Education Connection when this all was put into process. So the PTOs and the principal of both schools has been fully aware of all this. The issue is, and, and the thing is, is that, is that something happened last week, and I have, may have to, I'm not sure what, but I know that Sarah Forman was for this before. And the thing is, is that Carolyn Dwyer was here and can explain some of this to us. And Sarah Forman's here to explain her point of view on this. The issue is not that we have to rule on this because frankly, Education Connection can answer all these questions regarding liability. It's their staff that they provide. And the, the school system doesn't pay for any of this. It's paid for by parents. But in order for this to even be possible for us to rule on at some later date, there are certain things that need to happen now, or this will not happen, not be an option in the fall. And of these things, as a pilot program, we, we want these things to happen. It, it should be good that, that municipalities and parent groups are trying to get these things to happen and that the board or the administration isn't tasked with all of this background work. Because we've already said, even in this meeting, we want to find these different things that make this region special. So having this kind of thing work, I, I think is something we need to encourage as much outside work as possible and then encourage our, our understanding and our premature at the point when it's required. Now, it seems like at the moment, we just need to solve this, this issue between who was, who liked it and doesn't like it and whose toes is stepping out. But the fact that it comes now because it needs to be done now before certain things can happen for the fall, and that happens because we're all, our hairs are on fire because of the referendum, is, I think a bad excuse. You can't say this referendum keeps us from getting things done proactively to plan for the fall. So I think, you know, if, if Carolyn wants to give a brief statement, and Sarah can give her point of view on this, I know that I sat on the, I was chair of the Transportation Committee when this issue of the bus from Children's Station came in. And I pressed for a bus that went right by Children's Station to be used to be able to deliver Bridgewater students there. And it was a little issue of, you know, one, one bus heading up here anyway to do its later round, earlier round, however it were, and that it would go by. So I, I'm aware of the fact that, you know, and when things happen between a Bridgewater facility in Roxbury and Roxbury facility in Bridgewater, that sometimes buses are already going by and need to be looked at. And certainly, if that's not that easy, then we want to make sure that we're not adding costs to buses. But I, I think at this point, I really, from what I understand, that we're in a critical juncture. We need to, to bring in Roxbury families or not, or this is just going to fall apart and we're going to have another year of, wouldn't it be neat if we could do this and offer this to our students? So if we could have, Carolyn give a few words and Sarah voice her concerns because, as I said before, the, a lot of concerns refer to Sarah, who is a business owner in, in one of our towns.
Michelle?
I, I think several things that I just want to comment. First, that, you know, a program that helps families attend and be in our schools, I think is, is great. And Ed Connection, obviously, is a company that we have done business with, so I'm fine with that. It seems to me, though, that we need to stick to the original proposal, which was to, to have a program in Burnham because the town people, the PTO people of Burnham brought this forward because they really wanted it. I know when I first came on the board, well, I don't know, maybe eight years ago, that a survey was done by Ed Connection of all three of the towns about a need for this. And there were several Washington providers of after-school care who were very upset with us that we had done a survey without notifying them. All the families that were with them came to them and said, you know, what's going on? Are you going to be in business? So I think it needs to be thought about very carefully before we survey Roxbury or Washington. I don't know if those businesses are still open in Washington, so I, I can't really speak to that. But I think Jen's point of working with the principal in Washington to decide if that, how they would want to proceed, even with the survey, it makes a lot of sense. And I think, obviously, since we have a letter from the business in, in Roxbury, that I don't think, that was not the original proposal. The original proposal was for, for the school of Burnham because the town and the PTO came together and wanted that. And I, I don't think we're ready to start surveying Roxbury because I think we would want to hear from the town of Roxbury, the PTO, the businesses, the, the government in Roxbury as to whether this is something that they, that their community wants and needs. And I think Washington should do the same. The PTO, the principal, the town government, whoever it is, should talk about this and then can reach out to Ed Connection. And I think it would be great if Burnham piloted it and saw how it worked. And obviously, the board would have to have all the questions answered about how the program runs, but I think that part of it seems fine to me.
Susan?
Well, I do like that. I, I, I like the idea of at least moving forward and, and gathering information and input from Roxbury if there has not been that feedback already. We're aware of this since October. There had to be some sort of identified need. I will say, if the referendum passes, I don't agree that a school would be in Bridgewater. I, I don't know that there would be enough of a need for a school, private or otherwise, to be in Bridgewater, but I have my doubts about that. But even if it fails or if it passes, regardless of the referendum, Burnham will still be there in the 2014-15 school year, and working families could certainly still benefit from, from the program. So however, we can move this forward, start with what we have and, and reach out, but there must be Roxbury families and, and Washington families as well. I think there's got to be a need out there. With all deference to businesses, I don't want to slam any, 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 any business. I think everything has its, its pluses and minuses.
Peter?
I don't know if we should move the question or not, but basically I got elected-
There's no motion on today.
I got elected to support the superintendent in her agenda. And that's what I try to do. There are great ideas from members of the public, members of the board. I mean, there isn't any amount of ideas we can't support, but I think we need to look to the superintendent. Everybody hired her, voted for her, supported her. I don't think she's anti this proposal. I really don't. But I think she has spoken and we have to decide if we're going to support the chief executive officer. We're not anti Allen's position or anybody else's position. And I, I don't know why we have to rush into it, but I do think it's a very nice idea. But like I said, I guess, I got elected and I ran it strictly on supporting Pat. And if we, we're going to hear all these ideas throughout the course of many years. They come from the public, come from board members. They have to get passed through the superintendent. The board can't run the system. We can come up with ideas, but it's the chief executive officer who makes the final approval or disapproval. And right now, Pat doesn't seem to be in the mood for the sides this issue.
No, no, no. Can I speak for a second?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I have no problem with bringing to the board this program at Burnham School for Burnham students because that's what was discussed. And we, you know what I'm saying? Yes, we'd have to come up with insurance and get Ed Connection here, but the survey was already done. They already have parents who are interested. I have no problem doing that. My problem is bringing to other towns who have not had a chance to really look into it and, and have a conversation. That, that was thrown at me last week. So I have no problem if it goes to the, the Burnham families, even the Burnham families in middle school. I don't have a problem. Okay? And we can, you know, in, in, in two weeks, we can put together, get someone here for Ed Connection, get done with the facilities, what rooms. I don't have a problem. I support this program at Burnham School. My problem came when Roxbury was thrown into the mix without me really understanding. And then I had to say, whoa. That's a problem. So I have no problem coming back on March 26th, 24th, working with Kathy, having Kathy work with Carolyn and the Burnham people, getting it together, making a presentation. And on the 24th, you approve me at Burnham School. I fully support that.
Jennifer?
I just want to say that Bridgewater approached Roxbury and Washington about the idea, sent us the email, and then sent us the information. So as far as I'm concerned, and again, I don't want to speak on behalf of Roxbury, other than I know that I've had a conversation with the PTO president, and we both had decided that we weren't going to do anything. And I'm only saying that because I'm not speaking on behalf of her, but because we both were not doing anything. So for me, to hear Roxbury being lumped in could, it, it, it just, if Burnham wants to do it, Burnham should, it's great, they should do it. Present it to us, selfishly as a board member, but also as the PTO president, love a presentation from Education Connection. I'm sure that Emily Judd would love to see the presentation from Education Connection so she can get her answers to questions, so that we can then be thoughtful about when we do present something, if we do, to the Washington residents, that it's organized. That's all.
Karen, can you just tell us what the time constraints are, whether that would work on the 24th?
Sure, and then I'm happy to-
The way this works is you ask the chair to recognize and honor the public. Is that what you'd like to do?
Yes. Could we recognize, I, I would like to know the logistics of, this is what I'm asking, Carolyn, you recognize, see if this is appropriate. What, how the Roxbury PTO was involved with this, what changed and what the time constraint is, that's from Carolyn, and then also what changed from Sarah's perspective too?
All right. Does any member of the board have any extreme objections or hearing from Karen? Answer.
I feel bad. I could have answered all your questions before you all debated it. Okay, so we've been working on this since October. Pat is correct. We initially had an initial meeting. It really came from a couple of parents at Burnham coming to us and hearing that there were some families that actually left Burnham because we didn't have after-school childcare. That went on our radar and we said, you know what? We need to be competitive. We need to be competitive with St. Joe's. We need to be competitive with the Brookfield Schools, New Milford. All these other schools are offering this. How can we do the same? No mal-intent, just let's offer our parents what they need. We started the process. Education Connection popped up because that's what all the area of schools were using. I called Tracy Lay. She's the head person. She would love to come present to you. She's terrific. And then we had that small group meeting. Jen is correct. We, I reached out to them. You know, the process continued from there. We got to, and again, this is a process. And I, I am a volunteer, but I have been sending emails, and I have six months of emails, if anyone wants to see them, to all the different parties, if anyone's confused about the timeline. However, we got to a point where we've also been keeping the town apprised because they were the ones that really said this is important to them. Because this is a town viability issue for us, and this is an issue of bringing families into Bridgewater. We're hoping the other towns do it. If they don't, it's up to them. So where do we go? So then we sent out the survey. We got a great response. So we got over half of our student body saying they wanted to participate. That kind of blew us away. However, as you all know and remind us frequently, we have a very small student body. So Tracy Lay was uncomfortable launching the program without knowing if we could. She thought we could do it, but we wanted extra cushion. So that's when, in the past two weeks, that's what changed. I went back and reached, I reached out first, I guess, to Paula, and Paula said, oh, I guess we're, you know, we could, we'd be interested, sort of keep me posted, but it wasn't like we're interested in doing the program. And then somebody had mentioned to me that we should have talked to the children's station. I reached out personally to Allison Giselle because she lives, she's a Bridgewater resident. And we had a long conversation, and she said, you know what? We are concerned. We're really concerned because we don't want to take business from, you know, we don't want you guys taking business. And I said, well, listen, I'm calling actually because I have the surveys in front of me, and all 33 of these children, none of them are, none of them utilize your service. So we're good there. But I said, here's the pickle I'm in. We need a few more students to make this a go. And she said, well, you know, I, I get it. Like she, she wasn't necessarily comfortable of it, comfortable with it. She was concerned about her business. I said, well, could we word something? Could we put together a letter to the Booth families, sort of saying, I've spoken to Sarah. She's, if there's anyone that's not using her service. So how could we do it so that it took her needs into consideration, but also got the survey out there? In tandem, I looped with Paula, said, hey, listen, I'm talking to Sarah. We just had a great conversation. I think she's for it. Fast forward four days, I got an email from Sarah, have it with me, saying, you know what? I've rethought it. I don't want any part of it. I want my name off it. Blah, blah, blah. Okay, fine. Then I got an email from Paula, actually not too long after that, saying, I went to my PTO. Our officers were not comfortable doing this. But her suggestion was to go to Pat with the language that you all have in front of you, that maybe we would go that avenue. So we would send it out to the Booth families with the, the information exactly as you all have in front of you. That's where this process stopped. So at this point, it wasn't to keep anyone out of the loop. These are behind-the-scenes processes of trying to see where we were going to go, if it was just going to be Booth or Burnham, or if we were going to be able to expand it. At this point, the sense I'm getting is that we don't want to expand it right now. We want to do a pilot program just at Burnham. It may be a little tricky. We may have to do some finagling. I mean, again, 33 families, they need 18 per day, but what if one family doesn't want to go on a Monday? So then are we down one and we can't run that day? So we can work through that with Tracy. Next step is for Tracy and Pat to talk because they're the ones ultimately that have to be comfortable with all the logistics. There isn't a packet, there's nothing that's come our way yet, except for what you have in front of you. So there is a time constraint, though. Tracy understands our enthusiasm. She wants to help us. She's willing to give her time to us, even though we didn't get double the response that bigger districts normally give her. But she is under a time constraint. She needs to launch this in the fall. She needs to hire people. She needs to get the materials. She needs to put in place the enrichment programs because this is an enrichment, this isn't just childcare. This is tutoring. This is, this is hiring, hopefully within, also giving maybe our parents extra, extra opportunities for work. So all those components need to happen. So that's sort of where we are. And if I'm getting the sense tonight that we want to keep going, just Burnham, that's what we'll do. And we'll bring Tracy in. I'm sure she'd be happy to, you know, present to all of you, but specifically, I'd like to keep Burnham going as quickly as possible because we do have that deadline for the fall launch. And then at some point, I would love to address Cool School, but that might be during public comment.
Okay. Anyone, I hate to get into, I really don't want to get into, hold on, a lengthy discussion between the board and this lady here, but does anybody have any questions for her?
Damar?
Well, when we have this scheduled for action, can we see the results of the Burnham Elementary School survey?
Absolutely. I kept copies for myself, and I sent them all to Tracy, because Tracy's really the guru here, and she's the one that processes them and puts them in her spreadsheet. I mean, I did my own spreadsheet just because that's what I do, but...
Because we don't know how many groups need before-school, after-school, what the age group is, what the cost is. I mean, that's part of the package.
Sure. And we just, again, we're not there yet. We gave our parents the information they needed just to fill out a survey of interest. And then we gave them enough information to understand, you know, what do you want? Between $5 and $6.50 a day. They filled out before and after-school, we seem to have a greater need in the after-school arena, not as much in the before-school. There are some families that need five days a week, some that only need one. So that's sort of, but again, I can get you that whole stack. It was a good, interesting read.
And one more question. When you come back and make a presentation, or Education Connection does, I'd like to know, what do we do to offset the cost? And this is per hour, not per day.
There is no cost, and that's part of the appeal of this program. The cost, the cost is self-sustaining, so it's paid by the parents to them, everything is worked in, and they also have a lot of grants that they use for their districts.
Yeah, but the parents pay.
The parents pay, yes. But you don't have any skin in the game, the board, in the region.
Hold on.
But I just want to make sure that, you know, those parents who can't afford this service, there's some kind of help or assistance.
There actually is, and we discussed that at our first meeting, there is, again, we need enough people to do this. Once we do, they can grant a scholarship. There's both a scholarship, I think, I believe that they grant, and then there's a scholarship that the principal can grant, based on need. So again, there's a lot of reasons to make this a go, given the needs that we're seeing in the community.
All right, Carolyn, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is Sarah Forman here? Do you want to be heard in there?
Sure. Thank you.
What is, you want to come forward?
I'm Sarah Forman, I'm owner and director of the Children's Station. I, obviously, you all saw the letter I wrote. I really don't have feelings one way or the other. I chose not to support this program because I don't think it's in my business's best interest. I have no ill feelings one way or the other, whether someone opens a before and after-school, whether it's private, nonprofit, town, PTO organization. As long as kids have a healthy, safe place to go, before and after-school, that's fine. My question for the board was, if they were going to consider busing, seven years ago when I first opened, or six years ago, sorry, we're on our seventh, working on it, I had addressed the need for childcare in all three towns, and I had requested busing. And I was granted a bus from, to and from Burnham School in Bridgewater because my location happened to be on the direct route from Bridgewater back to Washington Bus Company. I was also explained and why it would be unfeasible for the region to cover a bus to bring families from Washington all the way out to Roxbury to me. I just wanted to put a request in that should we now start, you know, covering buses or working something out with transportation to get other towns to Bridgewater, would I be considered to have the same services? That was really my point on this and for the letter. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Is there anything else? All right, I have to be out for a few minutes, and I missed the beginning of this. Is there some problem with existing services or not sufficient to cover the number of students? Is commercial service not sufficient to cover the number of students that would demand?
From what I'm understanding, this is something that's been looked into, was a survey done, at least at Burnham, parents, there's apparently support for this service at the Burnham School, and it's being presented to us. For me, I'm in the initial first blush, and others have been involved in it, so apparently there's support for this.
Right. I guess the question I have is, is if we have a commercial service operating, providing a service in town, why would we want to venture into it? Because although the parents pay for the cost of the tuition and what have you, it's not free to the district. I mean, it's our buildings, it's our insurance risk, it's our liability, it's our custodians, their... This hasn't been the facilities, and the facilities would be looking at the ability of, you know, the logistics of it, and what it would cost, and whether it would actually cost us money, we may need to cover that. But I mean, this is, the question I don't understand is, if you had an existing commercial service that was inadequate, I could see people opening a service, but if your existing service is adequate and can cover the students, assuming you can figure out a way to get them there, the question is, why would we want to wade into that water? That's what I don't, I guess I don't understand.
Well, this is a presentation that's being made to us, I don't think we're going to decide this issue tonight. I'm hearing that, we're hearing that there's support for this, and so Dr. Casantino has said she doesn't object, have a problem with it, as it was initially presented to her with regards to the Burnham School. So ultimately, yes, if the board has assumed and approved this, we would have a full hearing of the board and we would vote on it. And your point will be taken as a subject. So I can't answer that other than that.
Well, the difference is, one, two parts of the question, one is that it's more than just childcare, it's enrichment and tutoring as well. And then the other side of the question is that, you know, a lot of schools, school districts are doing this now, it's to the school's advantage that this happens, not only for the enrichment of the students, but also for the families whose kids are enrolled in the school system. So even though it's right, obviously, to worry about liability and issues and facilities, it's something that, you know, is quite widespread, that Education Connection does a great deal in districts that are very happy about it. It's not as if it's like a burden or something that whose liability has outweighed an enormous asset. But of course, if we continue and have Tracy come and tell us all about it.
Sure.
Do you think that, Carolyn, do you think Tracy, do you know Tracy's been on the board?
No, I have not talked to her since this meeting, but I can reach out tomorrow.
I just want to say, let's move on to the, in the agenda, hopefully, so we can leave soon, and have it on the 24th, perhaps, get all the information, we can't have any action today.
Okay. Well, I'm seeing nothing else on this? Move on. I don't have opportunity to put public comment on agenda. Anyone who'd like to address this. Man, if you stand up in front of the camera, identify yourself with time.
A few obstacles left here. Hi, Carolyn Dwyer, from Bridgewater, and just wanted to also give you the background on Cool School. I know this one did sneak up on everyone quickly with no mal-intent. We had a very enthusiastic citizen from town, she doesn't even have children in the school, her name's Kathy Krigsman, and she contacted Julie and I because she knows we're involved in the school, and we're also, Julie's also working on some marketing issues or marketing initiatives for the town, and looped us in. And it moved fast, you know, despite, I know that sort of threw everybody, but I tried to keep everyone in the loop as the emails came in. First, we knew that we were being considered, and then it was, you know, oh my gosh, we've been chosen, and I said, we'd love to surprise Kathy, and we did, and poor Kathy is probably a little more surprised than she wants to be. And now here we are. So to your point, you know, they asked us about April 2nd, we jumped at it. Would they consider another date? I'm sure. I will say that the reason we were told today on the email was because of the referendum. It wasn't because of testing, it wasn't because of any other reason. If that was the reason, you might have gotten a different response back from me. But when I'm told it's because of a referendum, that sounds a little funny, because this really does, this really is a great thing. So, anyway, anything else? You know what, there was one more thing, and I know on the way out, when Bill Stewart was retiring, he asked for you guys to mic the room. The gentleman sitting next to me tonight, I had to be his interpreter, I had to write him notes. Can we just get a microphone so I don't have to do that for everybody? I don't mind, he's a very nice gentleman, but I guess that's it. And I'm glad to see on the tuition end that there's some movement. It was a little odd, though, watching everyone's re-discuss it, because we've discussed it twice in the past year, and we've seen the numbers come up a couple times. So a few people seem surprised that, of the information, but I have it all in my notes, so I really, and I know we have been emailing you all about asking that to get moving. So again, the volunteers are here to help you, not overwhelm you, and we're here to put the region on the map and be positive. That's why we're here. So let's keep the good feelings going. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for everything that you're doing. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Just tell us your name and what county you're from.
I'm Paula Conway, I'm from Roxbury. I figured I should speak out a little bit since my name was brought up a couple times. And just to clarify, Carolyn did, you know, reach out to both Jen and I earlier in this year about the program. We, you know, said, yes, we'd love some more information. We weren't able to attend the meeting. And then recently, Carolyn contacted me, said she was in contact with Sarah about, you know, wanting to poll Booth students and have Booth students go to the after-care program to make the program a more successful program. And I said, yes, that'd be great. And then the more I thought about it, the more I thought, this is kind of bigger than, than, you know, it was getting bigger and it shouldn't be a decision I should make alone. And that's when I, you know, talked to my board, and that's when I emailed Kathy as well, and, you know, for other programs, you know, like ASAP and things like that, it all goes through Pat, you guys, the board, the region. And at that point, I felt a little uncomfortable, I shouldn't be making these big decisions. So that's where I kind of pulled out and said, you know, let's give it to Pat and take it from there. You know, speaking, you know, my children attend Children's Station, and it is a private business, you know, it has really nothing to do with you guys, other than it's the only daycare in this area that provides infant care. My baby and my preschooler go there, and if that wasn't there, I don't know what I would do. And I know that there are other parents who are in the same situation. So even though it is a private business, you really don't have to worry about what her financials are and what's going on. If we want to attract young families to this area, we need to have childcare, infant through, you know, before and after care. Because otherwise, you know, what would we do? What would I do? I would have to drive to Southbury and then go to work, and then come back to Southbury, and then, you know, go home. It's just not, not practical, very inconvenient. So just something to keep in mind as you guys are making your decisions. And I do think, you know, I think the after-care program is great. I think it can, you know, I know it goes to the middle school range, which Sarah's company is unable to do because of licensing issues. So there are going to be opportunities that Sarah can meet. So I think everyone's intention is to bring, you know, more families, have more opportunities for young families and children in this area. And I agree with Jen, I do think we need to be careful as to how we speak about local businesses that are trying to support our cause, which is bring more families into this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. There's no executive session, is there? Most of you turn. All papers say aye? All right. Thank you all.